Would you then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening on this our last formal meeting for the 2013-14 governing year. Thank you, Lord, for all of the blessings you have bestowed upon our city. Grace, mercy, and blessings we ask for all. Bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city workers, and all of our citizens, especially those who mourn. Comfort them. The homeless, shelter them. Our children who are out of school for the summer, keep them safe. Now, Lord, lead us and guide us to make wise and courageous decisions for our city. Oh, Lord, help us to do all the good we can for Norfolk in all the ways we can, in all the places we can, in all the times we can, for all of the people we can. These and other blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Smigle, please.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The motion is... Will the clerk please read the resolution for the closed meeting?
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have all of you here. Believe me, we're glad to have all of you here. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process which will follow tonight is that we have four or five public hearings, and then we have the Talbot Hall meeting. And then we're going to have some regular agenda items. What I'd like to do is clear off all of the sort of non-contro... the items that... that only the... very few people are here for. So we can dispense with that pretty quickly. It looks like we have about forty speakers or so who want to speak maybe more on the Talbot Hall issue, and a whole bunch of you who have signed up who don't wish to speak but just to register your support or opposition to the question. So what we'll do is we'll handle it that way. At the conclusion of our formal agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. All you need to do in order to have your name signed is to sign a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. Okay? So the first thing we'll do then is move directly to public hearing number one.
Hearing one scheduled for this day under state law on the application of Old Dominion University for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of a portion of 50th Street from the eastern line of Hampton Boulevard, and by a six-year vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. There's... Stacy Valiant is here to answer any questions on public hearing number one, if anyone has any. All right, you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of 50th Street, and authorize the conveyance to the abutting property owner of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of 50th Street contingent upon the satisfaction of certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance granting a special exception to the Tidewater Corporation, authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment known as Handsome Biscuit on property located at 2511 Colonial Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three?
Public hearing three scheduled for this day under state law on the application of the city Planning Commission to amend the city's general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, to establish development criteria related to landscaping setbacks and parking to encourage a mix of uses and enhance pedestrian activity along the southernmost sections of Colonial Avenue and Granby Street in the Park Place neighborhood. And the Planning Commission recommends this on a six-year vote, Mr. President.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
I have an ordinance to amend the general plan of Norfolk, Plan Norfolk 2030, so as to establish development criteria related to landscaping setbacks and parking to encourage a mix of uses and to enhance pedestrian activity along the southernmost segments of Colonial Avenue and Granby Street within the Park Place neighborhood. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing four, please.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day pursuant to state law to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Martha E. Cooper on property located at 1720 Todd Street. And I have an ordinance... repealing ordinance 45430, adopted February 11, 2014, and authorizing the conveyance to Martha E. Cooper of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city of Norfolk pursuant to Section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing five?
Public hearing five scheduled for this day under state law to hear comments on approving a lease agreement with Stumpy Lake Golf Course for operation of Lambert's Point Golf Course.
Call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a lease with Stumpy Lake Golf Course Incorporated for operation of Lambert's Point Golf Course. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing five?
Public hearing five scheduled for this day under state law to hear comments on approving a lease agreement with Stumpy Lake Golf Course for operation of Lambert's Point Golf Course.
Call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a lease with Stumpy Lake Golf Course Incorporated for operation of Lambert's Point Golf Course. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R1, please.
R1 is an ordinance accepting a 2013 supplemental local emergency management performance grant in the amount of $9,300 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the city's Office of Emergency Management, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds for the Sheltering Capability Program. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R2?
An ordinance to amend and reordain Sections 15-2, 3, 5, 8, and 9 of the Norfolk City Code, 1979, so as to conform with the Storm Order Design and Construction Manual Incorporated in Chapter 41.2. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Where are we, R5?
R5. An ordinance permitting Greg Kuschevsky to encroach into Fair Avenue right-of-way at 2701 Davis Street with a paved driveway approximately 10 feet by 115 feet in length. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R4?
An ordinance permitting Greg Kuschevsky to encroach into Fair Avenue right-of-way at 2701 Davis Street with a paved driveway approximately 10 feet by 115 feet in length. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R6?
An ordinance to amend and reordain subsections B and C of Section 37-96 of the Norfolk City Code, 1979, so as to add one trustee who may be a retiree to the Board of Trustees of the employees' retirement system. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay. We are now... Call public hearing number six, please.
I have R7. A resolution acknowledging and concurring with the May 21, 2014 Resolution of Norfolk Public Schools, 55512, electing the employer certified contribution rate of 11.12% on behalf of employees who are members of the Virginia Retirement System effective July 1, 2014. Adopt the resolution. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Do you have an add-on?
Yes, sir. I have one additional item.
Sorry.
And that is an ordinance to schedule the starting time of the organizational city council meeting as 2:00 p.m. Tuesday, July 1, 2014, in the council chamber. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing six, please.
Public hearing six scheduled for this day under state law on the application of Talbot Hall West LLC to amend the city's general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, from institutional to single-family suburban, to amend the zoning ordinance to add Section 27-39 Talbot Hall residential plan development, and for a change of zoning from IN-1 institutional to PDR Talbot Hall on property located at 600 Talbot Hall Road, and by a 4-1 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay. All right. Well, again, let me thank all of you for coming out tonight. As you can tell, we have a full house here, and that's a good thing. We intend the council will give everyone a fair hearing. These are the ground rules. When I call your name, if you come to the podium, please, identify yourself for the record by giving us your full name and your present home address. And then we will ask you to limit your remarks to three minutes. You'll hear a little buzzer here, and we're going to strictly enforce the three-minute rule tonight since we have so many people, and we... And the other thing is, some people are going to go first, and some are going to go last. I mean, we don't intend to slight anybody who's speaking last. That's just the nature of the draw. I've been shuffling some of these papers as they've been handed to me because what we'll try to do is we'll ask for a proponent and then an opponent, and we'll try to go back and forth like that during... as everybody speaks. Of course, we really want to have a good public hearing, and you know that. And that means that every speaker needs to be treated with respect. Once the three minutes is over, you should step away from the podium. But there's no necessity for, you know, for making noises, you know, applause, that sort of stuff. What we want to do is treat everybody with respect. We value everybody's opinion who is here. Okay? So what I'll do... Also, I'm going to call one name, and then I'm going to call another. And there's a little... There's a chair here, which is sort of the bullpen chair. So that'll allow you to get up, move to that chair, so we don't all have to wait for the next speaker. While she's speaking, the next person can be coming up. You get the idea. So, all right. The first speaker then is Billy DeShiel. Mr. DeShiel will be followed by Jay Taylor. We're ready.
William DeShiel, 6919 Catherine Street, Norfolk, Virginia, 23505. Mayor Frame and council members, thank you for letting me present the rezoning application for Talbot Hall West LLC. I'm a resident of Talbot Park. I've lived in Talbot Park since 1995. My wife and I rebuilt our home and raised our family in the neighborhood. Talbot Park is a great neighborhood with a lot of friendly people. My neighbors and I have been fortunate to be the beneficiaries of the diocese's stewardship of Talbot Hall. The diocese has been gracious caretaker of the property and the neighborhood, has received tremendous tangible and intangible benefits from the ownership and management of Talbot Hall. As the property has aged and its relevance to the diocese's mission has evolved, the diocese has determined that it is no longer financially prudent for it to continue its stewardship of the property. When Bishop Hawley initially announced that he was going to sell the property to better serve the diocese, I understood what this meant. As time passed, I saw the concern of the neighborhood grow, the principal concern being what would ultimately fill the property. It's a large piece of property, and many options are available to developers. We heard credible reports of developers looking hard at the property for apartment complexes, high-density housing, and other possible conflicting institutional uses. Such potential usage would bring considerable traffic and a whole slew of other negative impacts on the character of the neighborhood and the quality of life. While this and much discussion about public and private conservation efforts, no proposal ever materialized. Our idea was born out of concern for this potential redevelopment and reuse scenarios. I concluded one of the most palatable reuses of the property would be the extension of the existing neighborhood. I threw the idea out to a few friends who responded favorably and were off and running, who is Talbot Hall West LLC. Talbot Hall West at its core is a cooperative. We're a group of families working together for the common interest, not real estate investors. We're investors in the future of the city of Norfolk. We are all, for various reasons, seeking new housing options and desire to stay in the city of Norfolk and remain a part of this community. The idea to extend the existing residential neighborhood into this area is not new. The Civic League has discussed this for the past ten years. The consistent choice of the Civic League is if Talbot Hall is redeveloped, an extension of the residential neighborhood is the best use and approach of this property. Our discussions with the diocese began with the executive committee. They stressed three important issues that we needed to address before they considered our offer. The neighborhood. The new development of houses and families must blend into the existing neighborhood. We chose to make the property very low-density and lots larger than the surrounding neighborhood. We wanted the expansion to feel like an extension of the neighborhood, so we extended Talbot Hall to ride directly into the property. Second, we acknowledged the rich history of the manor house structure. We recognized the history and the value of the manor house by using this historic structure as the center point or nucleus of our new neighborhood expansion.
You can sum up, okay?
That was a quick three minutes. We figured we had four options: the city of Norfolk to take over and run it, sell to a legitimate historical foundation, and a buyer would live in the house or use the house as a clubhouse. Three options did not materialize, and we were fortunate to find Harvey Lindsey. The manor house is under contract with Harvey Lindsey, and he has formed a foundation to purchase and restore the manor house. Next was a respect for the wetlands and the environment. I have over eighteen years on the Norfolk Wetlands Board, and I have reviewed over a thousand wetlands applications and sites over the past eighteen years. This site is suffering from heavy shoreline erosion, natural wetland destruction. Several beautiful live oaks are currently threatened by shoreline erosion. Our project is being designed to comply with modern stormwater requirements, stabilize the shoreline...
Okay. Two more seconds? Quickly.
All right.
Quickly.
Quickly, okay. Our plans are repair over 1,000 linear feet of shoreline, save endangered live oaks along the shore, and create over 900 linear feet of shoreline restoration and over 10,000 square feet of vegetated wetlands. We're working with the Elizabeth River Project, and our group is partnering with ERP under consideration for grants. We look forward to your support on this.
Thank you. Thank you. Jay Taylor, followed by James Smith. Thank you.
Mayor Frame, members of council, I'm Jay Taylor, living at 516 Oak Grove Road in Norfolk. I'm the chairman of the Talbot Hall Foundation. Talbot Hall West wants to build fourteen houses around the historic Talbot Hall manor house, two of which would be built directly between the house and the Lafayette River. This would cause Talbot Hall to lose its identity. As an example, of the country houses that used to dot the waterways of Old Norfolk County. Talbot Hall is the last of these that retain an original setting. Built while Thomas Jefferson was president, Talbot Hall was the home of an old and prominent Norfolk family. During the first year of the Civil War, Camp Talbot occupied much of what later became Talbot Park. The house was barely saved from burning, it's said, when Union troops arrived to occupy Norfolk, when they were shown the seal of the United States over the parlor mantel. That seal is still there. Famous visitors such as Edgar Allan Poe were guests at Talbot Hall. Within its foot-thick walls, built by the hands of slaves, Talbot Hall hosted interracial meetings during the Civil Rights Movement, as the Episcopal Church played its active role in the fight against segregation. In the mid-twentieth century, Minton Talbot had to sell off his farmland around Talbot Hall to cover real estate taxes that were rising after a series of Norfolk annexations. This became the Talbot Park neighborhood. He kept the several acres that had always been the Talbot Hall yard. With its spacious wooded lawn and its beautiful marshes, Talbot Hall has long made the Talbot Park neighborhood a unique and desirable place to live. The Talbot Hall Foundation has tried very hard to work with the LLC toward a compromise solution. After many requests, we were granted one meeting last month. We told the representatives that we had found a private party who would buy the manor house from the developer, thus reducing their cost. We offered an adjacent waterfront lot that will be given to the foundation by Carol and Talbot to make up for the setting aside of the front yard for the house. And the foundation has pledged to raise funds for restoration. If the developer would incorporate these resources into its plan, there would be no loss of homesites, no loss of waterfront homesites, and no loss of real estate tax income for the city. But since finally meeting with them, we had... We have had no indication from the developers of any interest in what we've offered. In 1954, Minton Talbot's daughter gave the property to the Episcopal Diocese, hoping that, as the Virginian pilot said at the time, quote, "The angels would preserve Talbot Hall." Well, now that the diocese has decided to sell Carol's gift, it seems only right that we, in this generation, should preserve this little bit of a yard that would enable Talbot Hall to preserve its dignity in the 21st century. Properly preserved, with its connection to the river intact, Talbot Hall can continue its unique place in the Talbot Park neighborhood and serve future generations of Norfolk who will want and need to know about Norfolk's history. A great city conserves its cultural heritage. Because this planned development would do harm to the historic value of Talbot Hall, and because that harm would be contrary to the policy of the city of Norfolk as expressed in its general plan, the Talbot Hall Foundation must ask that this rezoning application be denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Smith, followed by Mark Perrow.
Hey. Ready? My name is James L. Smith. I live at 324 Court Street in the Old Town section of Portsmouth. My grandparents lived in Norfolk. My mother and her two sisters grew up in Norfolk. My wife and I started out in Norfolk, and my two daughters even go to school in Norfolk. I think it might be time to move back. My family is one of the fourteen families before you tonight requesting the rezoning of the Talbot Hall property. Our plan... Our group's plan for Talbot Hall is the only plan before you for consideration tonight. The Talbot Hall West LLC families have assembled a highly qualified group of owners and professionals to ensure a successful development. We have a contract with Norfolk business leader Harvey Lindsey to buy and through his foundation renovate and maintain the manor house. The history of Talbot Hall in the Ward's Corner area will live on in the future... for future generations, thanks to Harvey Lindsey. A group called the Save Talbot Hall Foundation has gone to extremes to interfere with our private transaction with the Episcopal Diocese. They have distributed confusing information about our plans as well as those of Mr. Lindsey. The fact is, in the three years that this property has been on the market, the Save Talbot Hall Foundation has never made an offer to buy the property from the diocese. I recently asked the opposition leader, Jay Taylor, why his passionate group had not purchased the property for themselves. His reply was, "We simply have no money." The opposition group has gone so far as to ask that we change our plans for the manor house, which is under contract to Harvey Lindsey. They asked that we instead sell it and the waterfront lot in front of it to one of its members for his own personal residence. They never asked for nor provided a purchase price. Their whole approach is nothing but a red herring. Our group of families is real. We have a plan, and we put it into action. We did not sit back and wait for the wrong type of development to be built on this institutionally-zoned property. We put together the team, the plan, and the money to make Talbot Hall a successful development Their whole approach is nothing but a red herring. Our group of families is real. We have a plan, and we put it into action. We did not sit back and wait for the wrong type of development to be built on this institutionally-zoned property. We put together the team, the plan, and the money to make Talbot Hall a successful development that will be a great addition to the Talbot Park neighborhood and the City of Norfolk. Great neighborhoods are what make great cities. We look forward to working with the City of Norfolk on its newest great neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Perrow, followed by James McDonald.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of council. My name is Mark Perrow. I reside at 950 Hanover Avenue, and I am vice chairman of the Talbot Hall Foundation. I oppose this proposal for a planned development district on the Talbot Hall property as clearly not in the best interest of the City of Norfolk. The planned development district before you will specifically authorize building houses on land in front of the Talbot Hall House, destroying its historic riverfront situation, and thereby destroying or severely degrading its historic setting, integrity, and significance. But I want to address my remarks to one phenomenon of our public life that has raised its head in this matter and too often affects our local public dialogue. That is the phenomenon just mentioned of the red herring, which is something intended to divert attention from the real problem or matter at hand. The red herring is dangerous because we all have only so much time and energy to focus on any single issue, and it throws off discussion into and attention onto irrelevancies, avoids the real issue, perhaps permanently, and ill-informed or mistaken decisions can result. The red herring has come up in discussion of this proposed rezoning in several ways that interfere with logical consideration of the real issue. One is that this is a single-family residential zoning proposal, and what could be more logical and beneficial to the adjoining neighborhood than single-family residential zoning? But that is not quite right. A very specific planned development district is before you, one that divides the property into building lots, two of which are directly in front of the historic manor house and would destroy its historic setting. So the issue is not residential zoning, but whether this very particular PDR plan with two destructing building lots as key components is in the best interest of the city and consists with law. Two, it has repeatedly said that the LLC members are good and longtime citizens of the city who contribute in many ways to our city's progress and success. Let's stipulate that that is a fact, but let's also recognize that the good character of the proponents for rezoning is not a criterion for whether a particular rezoning should be approved under state and local law. Third, it has pointed out that the LLC has a contingent contract to buy the property, and for council to deny the proposed rezoning would improperly interfere with that contract, or that opponents to this rezoning who have asked the LLC to consider an alternative means to proceed that would not destroy the historic setting of Talbot Hall are somehow improperly interfering with the contract. Neither proposition is correct, and both avoid the real question. Is the proposal before you to demarcate the property into 14 lots in this particular way in the best interest of the city and consists with state and local law? Fourth, the LLC's paid consultant argues that the LLC, with her expert help, may convince relevant governmental authorities that the house, despite loss of its waterfront setting, may yet be significant enough to gain eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places. Whether that is true or not is, again, beside the point. The issue is whether it's in the public interest for you to approve a planned development district that would best severely degrade the historic significance of a Norfolk historical treasure. Great cities act proactively to protect and enhance historic treasures of Talbot Hall's quality and value. You were asked to do so, but declined. At the least, you should not be active partners in the destruction of the settings such Jim, and I ask you to decline to approve the requested PDR district. Thank you very much.
Jim McDonald, followed by Susan Schrader, please.
Good evening. My name is Jim McDonald. I live at 218 Sinclair Street in the Talbot Parks section of Norfolk. I'm also the Talbot Park Civic League president. I just wanted to kind of put in perspective about where we've been up until tonight. When I moved into Talbot Park in 1991, there was always rumors that the diocese would one day sell this property in question. About 10 years ago, in 2004, and I believe it's in your packet, my predecessor, Tim Smith, wrote a letter on behalf of the Civic League to Planning saying, you know, "At this point, we're concerned about the future of Talbot Hall, the property itself, and we request for rezoning change to residential." So here we are today. This has not been anything new. It's certainly been around. We've certainly presented it several times at Ward's Corner Task Force meetings, and it's been a very popular topic over the past couple of years at our Civic League meetings, meetings at the Church of Ascension, et cetera. The danger, we thought originally, with a zoning change with residential, that it would be a high-density-type project coming in, similar to perhaps Lafayette Shores or East Beach. What we didn't want to happen is, first of all, if it remained institutional, a buyer possibly could come inside unseen, buy it, level the entire piece of property, and then use it for institutional purposes. The Civic League has always been against that type of development, that type of opportunity, even today. So here we are today. When this opportunity first surfaced, there were two things that were very appealing to most of the people in Talbot Park. First of all, it's a low-density project. The average lot size is just over half an acre. In addition, the concern about the manor house was taken care of by the fact that they were able to secure and raise money, pledges, et cetera, with the gracious and generosity of Mr. Lindsey to purchase the manor house. So here we have a low-density project that includes the manor house. As you know, Planning, the staff at Planning recommended approval. Planning did approve it. We're in support of it as a Civic League, and I ask that you accept the application and change it to residential. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Schrader, followed by Harvey Lindsey.
Good evening. I'm Susan Schrader. I live at 1766 Farragut Avenue. Our rivers put Norfolk on the map, and today it is still one of our strengths. The plan on the table benefits a few. The river makes this historic home a plantation. Our city has a 1797 historic plantation. Help, please, help us keep this historic, unique, and green space for our souls, spirits, and all the future citizens of Norfolk.
Thank you. Harvey Lindsey, followed by Mary Louise O'Brien.
Mayor Frame and members of the council. I live at Harbor's Edge, 1 Colley Avenue in Norfolk, apartment 900. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. When the diocese approached me and their company about selling this property, I knew that it would be something that we really had to give a tremendous amount of thought and attention to and do the right job for it. It's a magnificent piece of real estate, a beautiful property. It has a great historical value, and, believe me, we thought long and hard about what to do with it and how to work it out. And we feel very, very good that we've come up with Talbot Hall West LLC. 14 fine and outstanding business people living in the City of Norfolk who want to build in the City of Norfolk, create additional real estate values, and really do a great job for the property. If you take a look at the zoning of this property under institutional, there are not good uses that would be allowed here, and it would not be a good thing if they were taken advantage of. So you need to give that consideration. As far as the view of the manor house, I have taken it on myself personally to purchase the manor house in a foundation that I'm forming because it has great historical significance. It's a fantastic and wonderful historic property. Construction started in 1799, was completed in 1804. It's just got great historical value, and I want to save it. And I would ask everybody here tonight that's interested in Talbot Hall and the property to give me assistance in doing this. But we're going to do it. We're going to save the manor house, and it should be saved. And finally, as far as the view, I'm satisfied that there is a good view from the front porch of the manor house to the water. The houses, if you look at the master plan, the houses are set so that there's a good view sufficient from the front porch to the water. So I would ask the council this evening to approve this rezoning. I think it's in the best interest of this city, and, believe me, I've been in real estate for 60 years, and I would never ask you not to do something that I really didn't truly believe was in the best interest of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Louise O'Brien, followed by George Grinnon.
My name is Mary Louise O'Brien, and I live at 520 Talbot Hall Road. I speak in opposition to the rezoning change. Our family has lived across the street from Talbot Hall for nearly 40 years. As neighbors, we've watched out for one another, helped one another whenever possible. We've carpoolled schools together, celebrated our children's birthdays, graduations, and weddings, and mourned the loss of our loved ones. As my husband and I approach our 70s, we know it is likely we will leave Talbot Park in the next decade, and inevitably, this earth one day. We will leave no mark in history but the fondness of our children, and that will be quite enough for us. That is not enough for a city, however. Every society needs its history, every nation, every state, every city, because we trust the city to help educate our children to bear the difficulties of life they will inevitably face. Norfolk's historical legacies not only make us unique in the history of America and draw tourists to visit, they teach two crucial lessons among many. First, they inspire our children. Our legacies inform them that they are not alone in their new frontier because those who have lived here before have discovered how to solve the problems of wars, plagues, social unrest, and economic disaster. They teach our children hope and self-reliance. Our historic places offer a second lesson as the tangible witnesses that teach us and our children what not to do and the cost of mistakes that must never be repeated. They remind us that we are fallible, that we must examine our lives in the present with caution and without arrogance. As a nation, as Americans with a story to tell our children, we preserve the lessons of the Liberty Bell, Gettysburg, Yorktown, and Fort Monroe so that history books will come to life for our children and transform them. It is just as important that Talbot Hall tell Norfolk's story to the generations who will come after us. If we fail to keep the house's connection to the Lafayette, its very life's blood as a river plantation, it will lose its historical authenticity. It will not be worthy of the good auspices of Preservation Virginia, the National Register, or the Virginia Department of Historical Resources. It will become just another old house. Two centuries of Norfolk life will be gone, and so will the lessons it can teach our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. George Grinnon, followed by Alice Allen Grimes.
Thank you very much. My name is George Grinnon, and I live at 508 Brackenridge Avenue in Talbot Park and have lived in Norfolk since 1969. I've also lived in West Ghent, Lockhaven, and the Larchmont sections of Norfolk, and I am here to totally support Talbot Hall West LLC. I have personally known many of the Talbot Hall West LLC families for more than 35 years. In fact, one of the families, Rick and Blair Simpson, are godparents to my oldest daughter. This entire group of families are truly wonderful people. I consider the Talbot Hall West LLC plan, along with a generous gift from Harvey Lindsey that will go towards preserving the manor house, an incredible gift to the Talbot Hall neighborhood. Personally, and I can speak for my wife as well, I couldn't think of a nicer group of people that I would rather have as my neighbors than the families of Talbot Hall West LLC. This is absolutely a win-win situation with the gift for the manor house preservation, the building of quality first-class homes, and the beautiful people who are Norfolk citizens and care deeply about the City of Norfolk. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Allen Grimes, followed by Danielle Crewer.
My name is Alice Allen Grimes, and I live at 1322 Mallory Court in Norfolk. I'm here on behalf of the Norfolk Preservation Alliance. In the last 10 to 15 years, we have lost a number of significant historic sites in Norfolk. Taylor Elementary School, the Guild House, now a vacant lot, Kadiv Temple, replaced with mediocre condos in the historic Freemason area, Historic Church Street, at least eight contributing structures to the downtown historic district, four of which were torn down for the non-existent Granby Tower, including the amazing curved-front Commonwealth Bank Building torn down for a sales trailer, and we've lost the Decker Building downtown and the oldest building on Granby Street, and John T. West School, Norfolk's first public African-American high school and the first accredited such school in the South, and that one still hurts Mr. Riddick, and a lot more. Talbot Hall is the only antebellum plantation manor house in Norfolk that retains its setting. The bricks for the manor house, the construction of which began in 1799, were made on-site. This property represents the history of a significant Norfolk family, a family responsible for Norfolk's first paved streets, the plantings of live oaks and crepe myrtles and azaleas that still remain in City Park and along Granby Street, for founding what has become our treasured Chrysler Museum, for introducing the Camellia to Norfolk, for founding the Freemason Street Library and Christ Church. This property presents a fantastic opportunity to interpret and relay Norfolk's history as a waterfront city, including important chapters in our African-American history. What is essential is that we retain the entire property, not the house, the setting, the landscape, the context. These are what need to be kept for Norfolk's people and in order for this house to maintain its historic value. Talbot Hall is a critically important historic resource in a city that has annihilated far too much of its history. If the integrity of the property is lost, the historic value is lost forever. The Norfolk Preservation Alliance asks that you deny this rezoning request because approving it will not support the general welfare of the people of Norfolk, which is your fundamental charge. There is a network of citizens' organizations with a vital plan to use this property for all of Norfolk's citizens, not just a small opposition group who want their own private enclave. If you approve this rezoning request based on any argument that otherwise you are somehow interfering in a real estate contract, then you will have to approve every single rezoning request that ever comes before you again. The only thing we have that makes our city unique is its history. By whittling it away, you are destroying the one thing that makes us strong. Your decision is a big deal, a very big deal. Norfolk has a reputation throughout Virginia for obliterating its historic sites. We are way overdue for a change in direction. Deny this request. We need a better vision for the City of Norfolk and for our future. We can always build new houses for all these nice people. We will never have another antebellum plantation in Norfolk that retains its setting. We will never have another Talbot Hall, and it's only been on the market for one year.
So Danielle, is that right? Crewer, followed by Brad Clavon.
Thank you. Danielle Crewer, and 201 West 21st Street, Norfolk. Good evening, Mayor Frame and members of City Council. I'm Danielle Crewer, and I'm an attorney at the firm of Vent Curran Warman here in Norfolk. Along with Dan Warman, I represent the Talbot Hall Foundation. There's been some question whether opposition to the LLC's rezoning application constitutes an interference with contract, and I'd like to address that issue. Interference with contract must be a tortious or wrongful act. In 2002, the Supreme Court of Virginia held that a party to a real estate contract may not bring an action for tortious interference against others who oppose the rezoning applications for that property. The court rested its holding on the First Amendment right to petition the government and the Nor Pennington doctrine of the United States Supreme Court, which protects efforts to affect the decisions of legislative bodies in the field of public policy matters. The court specifically held that the doctrine applies to business torts in Virginia and upheld the circuit court's dismissal of account for tortious interference with contract. So it follows that if a citizen or group has the right to petition the government to deny a zoning application, then undoubtedly the governing body has the right to deny the application. In fact, under the Code of Virginia, local governing bodies may amend zoning classifications only if public necessity and general welfare require. That same chapter states that "one purpose of a zoning ordinance shall be to protect against the destruction and encroachment upon historic resources." And the City of Norfolk has carried Virginia's historic preservation mandate into its own zoning ordinance, which is intended in part to, quote, "protect and preserve historic resources of the city," and also to implement the general plan. That plan has an entire chapter devoted to historic resource preservation, but one goal in particular is, quote, "increasing the number of historic resources that enjoy local zoning protection." So this body has not only the right to deny the zoning application, but without fear of interfering with the contract, but the duty to deny if the rezoning doesn't further the state and local public policy of protecting historic resources. This plan provides no enforceable or sustainable zoning protection to ensure long-term preservation. The Talbot Hall, as a public interest group, has not interfered with the contract at all. In fact, it has proposed to contribute significant resources to help that contract better align with the city's public policy goals. The LLC has not taken advantage of those resources, even though they simply have proposed to preserve the historic solstice yard, which is really about half acre of the property between the manor house and the river. So in its current form, the LLC's development plan falls short of Norfolk's historic preservation goals, and it will eventually render Talbot Hall historically irrelevant. For these reasons, the Foundation urges you to place public interest above a private contract and deny these applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Clavon, followed by Dan Warman.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, thanks for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Brad Clavon. I reside at 502 Talbot Hall Road. I'm also a former Talbot Hall Civic League president, and I'm speaking in support of the Talbot Hall West LLC's effort to secure the PDR zoning. If you're not familiar with my home location, I'm right on Talbot Hall Road, within a block of the property. The question of the use of the property was addressed, you know, at our Civic League level. As you know, it was affirmed by the Planning Commission. But I just wanted to point out, and Jim touched on that, Jim McDonald, that this issue was addressed 10 years ago by the Civic League. That's our neighborhood representative body. And it came to our attention that the property was zoned IN-1. When I was Civic League president, I didn't realize that. But we voted, and we went on record with a letter to the Planning Commission and City Council, and I've got a copy of it here, and you all have it in your packets, that it was our desire that, should that subject property be developed, it should remain residential and to keep within the character of the neighborhood. The proposal that's in front of you embodies really what was desired 10 years ago. It's a quality development. It's an establishment of the Foundation with a real monetary commitment to preserve the manor house. You know, as it stands now with the current zoning, my understanding is that should this fall through, there's an opportunity to allow for 300 households to be built there, including with this institutional zoning. I can tell you that being on Talbot Hall Road, that street would not support the increased traffic burden, the increased burden on utilities. We couldn't live there with that zoning. I can tell you that, certainly speaking personally, along with my neighbors, that would create a real problem in the neighborhood. And I can tell you that people would probably move from the neighborhood. You're going to lose tax base. So you have a choice here, you know, use of the property, use of this property, you know, by the LLCs with a strong development. You'll have a strong tax base. I don't think we could have asked for a better plan. In fact, I think you should look at this plan and try to duplicate it amongst other areas of the city. I encourage you to agree with me that a change in zoning is for the betterment of the city and the neighborhood. Thank you very much this evening. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Dan Warman, followed by Joseph Sensi.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Dan Warman, 1209 South Fairwater Drive, Norfolk. I'm an attorney. That has been retained by the Talbot Hall Foundation. Many fine speakers that I'm following here, so I'll try not to repeat things, but there's some things that need to be said. This is an irreversible decision. The issue before you really is whether you feel forced to make a decision with irreversible consequences on the heretofore unthreatened historical site of Talbot Hall. An unnecessary decision, one easily avoided, and the belief mistaken, I think, that the proposal of the LLC is the best and only plan. Stated with clarity, you're going to vote today not simply to approve a change in the zoning of the Talbot Hall property and the city plan, but to create a planned development, not a residential development open to all, but a development, let's face it, for 14 families. So there are 14 good families. I know many of these folks here, acquaintances. But it is 14. On the other side of the scale of decision is one which will necessarily implicate the disposal of a living, useful, historical providence of Talbot Hall and destroy its historical setting and access to the river, which made it what it was, a plantation. The setting and house yard go back to 1800. It's been part of every change in American life, culture, every change of this city. It survived the War of 1812. It survived the Civil War. A property that predates any city plan, all zoning predates all of us. Now, I say it's unnecessary. Why do I say that? Well, the LLC has known since the inception of the plan, that is, the desire of the Foundation not to destroy, not to destroy their plan, but to preserve the proper setting of the house, not to destroy the plan. Despite repeated requests to accommodate this, the LLC agreed to meet only once. I was at the meeting, and it had no response to a reasoned plan of the Foundation to preserve what is called the solstice yard, which connects the house to the river and makes it of a piece, a plantation. No counterproposal, no proffer to preserve the site, only a promise to preserve the house, secured, however, by one of the great citizens of Norfolk, Mr. Lindsey. Why is this refusal? Why do they refuse to do this? Because I believe that, for a variety of reasons, there's a thought that appro- Because I believe that for a variety of reasons, there's a thought that approval of this is assured without even a modest concession to history. Two reasons have been put forward. The word red herring is unfortunate phrase. Red herring came up early on, that you must approve this. Well, it's the only plan that there is. Well, of course, that's not so. Talbot Hall has proposed an alternative plan that does not destroy the site, provides for a small space, 5%. The denial of this request is not a denial of residential zoning for all time, just this plan. A strong historical statement by the City Council will likely lead to a new and better plan, which is unlikely to include 300 houses, and which will conserve the history of the site. The second reason they've given has been touched upon, interference with contract. That simply is not so. Zoning decisions are made every day, which enrich some, hurt others, and all of them. There was a contract in place. Somebody had something in mind. It is a planned development, which in fact is unlawful without the zoning change, and it is altogether right for this city to weigh heavily the impact on the historical site that this would have. It would be wrong not to weigh this. Any decision for or against would be well within the legal standard of reasonably debatable and not subject to a viable court challenge.
Dan, could you sum up, please?
I will. It is wise, I submit, ladies and gentlemen, that it is wise not to unnecessarily make this irreversible decision and deprive the city of Norfolk, the citizens of Norfolk, rather, of the access to this and use of this historical site, which thousands, including many here, have enjoyed over the years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joseph Sensi followed by Lynn Roth Taylor.
Joseph Sensi, 6811 Caroline Street, Norfolk, Virginia, 23505. Good evening, Mayor Frame and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present supporting comments for Talbot Hall LLC proposal. My wife Sherri and I are very much in favor of the Talbot Hall West LLC proposal to have 14 houses constructed on the property at a much lower density than the rest of Talbot Park. The current property usage for wedding receptions, parties is noisy, brings traffic, and is an annoyance to neighbors. You cannot hear yourself talk outside during these events. The property, manor house, and outlying buildings are in disrepair and not open to the public. The manor house has never been available, excuse me, manor house is not available to the public. As a direct backyard neighbor to this property, I'm against institutional facility at this residential location, where hundreds of condos is happening at the former Duck Inn property in Virginia Beach. So the idea of extending the residential flavor of Talbot Hall is appealing. This is the first viable project emerged after several years. The Talbot Hall LLC has a financial plan to create a foundation, preserve the historic manor house, and make it available to the public. Some would like to suggest the property is a park. This is not a park, but unsupervised private property with where no trespassing signs are routinely ignored. The number of unsupervised activities that occur on this property and its current status is alarming. Frequently, young people gather at the northern point under the no trespassing sign with smoke rising over the location. When I walk out to the end of my property, the people run off. This is disconcerting. Therefore, the idea of a nice neighborhood subject to normal police monitoring that with access to the manor house via a functioning funded foundation is appealing. The ability to walk on a lighted street with a sidewalk is desirable, and I won't be trespassing. The existing waterfront is in disrepair, and the LLC's environmentally responsible improvements to the waterfront will be appreciated by all invisible from the water. I have received correspondence from the Norfolk Preservation Alliance and Save Talbot Hall Group, not neighbors of the property. They've been unable to offer any financial viable alternative these past four years, so their goal seems to be focused on controlling other people's property and money. We're lucky that a group of Norfolk residents have taken the initiative to create a nice neighborhood and preserve the manor house. People with ties to Talbot Park in Norfolk should be able to pursue their dreams without fear of obstructionist. As a direct neighbor, I totally support Talbot Hall West LLC plans to build residential homes and consider it a significant improvement to my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Roth Taylor followed by Barbara Lipskus.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Lynn Roth Taylor, 516 Oak Grove Road, Norfolk, Virginia. I speak in opposition to the rezoning. Fortunately, our ancestors had the wisdom to save for us Jamestown and Williamsburg. We can go there today and experience our past, see, smell, and feel our past. Can you imagine Virginia without Jamestown and Williamsburg? They are part of Virginia's cultural heritage. I can't imagine Norfolk without historic Talbot Hall and its place along the river. Talbot Hall is Norfolk's cultural heritage. It is imperative that Talbot Hall and its place along the river be saved because destroying it destroys our cultural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Lipskus followed by Joseph George.
Barbara Lipskus, 6915 Mallard Drive, Norfolk, Virginia. I've been a resident of Talbot Park for over 30 years. Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you, Mayor Frame, and ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I am here to speak in favor of the proposal to rezone this parcel of land for the addition of residential homes in Talbot Park. Other options such as commercial, institutional, or high-density housing wouldn't align with the character of the surrounding community, while the proposed plan would create a wonderful extension of our neighborhood and a bonus to the citizens of Norfolk. I appreciate this democratic process of listening to opposing voices, but as a citizen, I question the value of owning land in Norfolk if at any time a special interest group can interfere with the rezoning of land, which is not in their possession or not likely to be in their possession in the near future. I am sure if we queried the people here today, we would come up with at least 20 viable options of what we could do with this parcel of waterfront property. Anything from retirement homes, public boating access, a bird sanctuary, a dog park, condominiums, the list could go on and on, and each would have its own merit. My two puppies will be the biggest proponents to not develop this land, but I don't have the $8 million to keep that as a community asset. And not one of us should have the right to prevent the rezoning and the sale of this property unless we have the funds to make a purchase and make something happen. We speak of this as being a Norfolk historical treasure. The manor house is in great state of disrepair and decay. It needs immediate attention if there is any hope of creating a historical site that will be here for generations to come. The rehabilitation and restoration of Talbot Hall Manor is a component of this plan. I have faith in the wisdom of our city officials to not allow special interest groups to stalemate and interfere in property transactions that cause no harm and will enhance our neighborhood while increasing the city tax base. Change is difficult for all of us, and it should not be the desires of a few that dictate the division or the sale of this property, let alone the use of its shoreline. Today, the Lafayette River doesn't really serve as the umbilical lifeline to the manor house. Unfortunately, life has taught us that wishes and dreams don't just come true. We have to work hard to make them happen. The Talbot Park West LLC has a plan. I applaud the initiative taken by these members to not only secure funding, develop a community-friendly plan, but to also recognize the value of preserving the manor house. They have created this plan with the best interest of their neighbors in mind, and as a community, we should welcome this opportunity to grow in size and remain one of the most desirable and welcoming neighborhoods in Norfolk. I am in approval of this plan, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joseph George followed by Patrick Yaki.
I'm Joseph George. I reside at 1447 Westover Avenue, 23507. I'm here to ask that you deny this request. With all respect to Mr. Harvey Lindsey and Mr. DeShiel and others, who have really put forth a great effort in trying to do well for the city of Norfolk and increase our tax base and improve the properties, at Talbot Hall, I still stand with the idea that Talbot Hall should be connected to the Lafayette River. It's just too much history that is there to be put aside to put in development. I would really wish that Talbot Hall LLC would go back to the drawing board and see if they could come up with a way that would really have a physical attachment between the home and the river. And with that, I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Patrick Yaki followed by Robert Brown.
Good evening, Council. My name's Patrick Yaki. I live at 214 Carlyle Way in Norfolk, Virginia, which is in Talbot Park. I've lived there for about 15 years. I must admit that I'm a little bit jealous that I'm not one of the 14 families that will be moving into the project eventually. I do trespass on the property on a daily basis on my morning walk, and that's going to be difficult to give that up, but the properties, it's going to be sold, apparently. It's going to become something different, and I'm here to express my interest in what I would like to see happen to it. I was at the Planning Council meeting back on April 24th and learned quite a bit about it. First of all, there was a gentleman here talking about another piece of property that he wanted the city to provide funds for, park or sidewalks, things like that, and it came to the conclusion the city doesn't have the money for that. It certainly doesn't have the money to purchase this property and do the historic justice that I think we would like to see. The other thing I learned was the condition of the manor house. The representatives from the Episcopal Diocese apologized for the disrepair that the house was in. The other thing that I learned was that Harvey Lindsey was going to purchase the manor house and make proper repairs and renovations to it. After listening to Jay Taylor, I'm really juiced about what is going to happen when Mr. Lindsey is able to eventually start work on that property. But back to Talbot Hall. This project does three things. It eliminates the institutional zoning. It provides additional homes to the neighborhood at very low density, and it provides for longevity of the manor house. I think it's a well-thought-out project. What I read from the newspaper is that the biggest concern of the opponents of the project is the manor house and the view to the water. I don't quite understand that. It sounds to me like the manor house, once it's restored, it's going to be a pristine artifact of the city of Norfolk. You know, again, this project provides bringing this piece of property back to the neighborhoods, lower density, and longevity of the manor house. You know, in our neighborhood, we've got DePaul Hospital at one end of the street. We've got Riverside Terrace Apartments at the other end of the street, high density. Collins Development has come in with proposals for that. You know, I'm just very concerned that if this property is, this proposal's not approved, what is going to happen to our neighborhood, and I ask you to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Brown followed by Robert Gale.
Robert Brown, 8507 Troy Street, Norfolk. Good evening, Mayor Frame, Council. I'm here as a historic reference. I grew up in the Episcopal Church. I had my first communion and had a picnic at Talbot Park. It's truly a gem on the Norfolk waterfront in need of preservation. I'm not opposed to development. I worked in historical restoration for a number of years in Ghent. It is a very expensive process to restore an old house, and I applaud Mr. Lindsey for stepping up to do that. I am opposed to the current development plan, but not to total development. We have a very contentious crowd here tonight, and this is a very important issue, and I really would recommend that someone on council make a motion to table this so we could have future discussions in the future. I think this is important, this decision is too important to make tonight. Thank you.
Robert Gale followed by Stephen Dexter.
Thank you very much. My name's Robert Gale. I live at 7439 Flicker Point in Algonquin Park. As such, that puts me right across Crab Creek from this wonderful property. It's been a blessing to me and my family to be able to live in that area and the whole neighborhood of Algonquin Park, Talbot Park, and it's just an unbelievable place to live. So I can understand the people's attachment to it. The historical basis of this is hard to argue with. It's a wonderful property, and the history is outlined in the paper last week is something I'll admit that I wasn't very knowledgeable about. The thing that I keep coming back to is the fact that this is a proposal that is concrete. It's real. If it's allowed to go forward, it will happen. The house will be restored, and the property will be developed in what I think will be a fashion that renders this a very nice extension to the neighborhood. I have the very great feeling that if this doesn't, that we'll be back a year or two from now talking about this, and there'll be more talks about what could be or what should be, but I can tell you, I don't think this will be. So my thought is, I'd like to see this project go forward.
Stephen Dexter followed by Neil Crawford.
I'm Stephen Dexter. I reside at 509 Carlyle Way. I've lived in a block of Talbot Hall for the last 34 and a half years. In listening to the discussion this evening by the 23 people preceding me and listening to the Planning Commission, I think we're much closer to agreement than each side will acknowledge. Nobody has anything against the 14 families that want to develop this property. At issue is the preservation of the historical significance of Talbot Hall itself. There is plenty of land to reallocate that land. It may be not quite as prime as anybody would think, but it can be done. I hear people on one side saying, if we don't do this now, if we don't approve it now, then we're going to have to deal with institutional efforts with large-density housing. That's thrilled talk, quite frankly. During the Planning Commission meeting, there was a proposal made by a member of the Planning Commission to defer a decision until the two sides could sit down and talk. I wish that had occurred because I think we could have avoided a lot of this rehash of hearing the same things that I did several months ago during the Planning Commission. I urge that the City Council adopt a resolution that these two sides sit down and come up with a solution for this thing, because approval of the ordinance, the planning ordinance as written, is going to do nothing more than add to the strife. Disapproval is going to do the same thing. I rest my case.
Thank you. Neil Crawford followed by Virginia Distanzaleo. Pardon me if I screwed that up. Sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Norfolk City Council. My name is Bill Crawford, and my wife Karen and I reside at 1401 Old Brandon Avenue in Norfolk. Karen and I are one of the 14 families of Talbot Hall West LLC, and we urge you to support our rezoning request tonight. As I said in the Planning Commission hearing, there are many reasons to support this project. First, this project is good for the Talbot Hall neighborhood because we will be building 14 single-family homes that fit into and blend into the existing residents in the area. Also, this project is good for the Talbot Hall Civic League because we will be active members of the Civic League, and we will work hard to be involved with making the Talbot Hall area a great place to live and raise families. In addition, our plan is good for the city of Norfolk because we will be converting the subject property from a non-taxpaying entity to a taxpaying entity that will increase the value of the property in excess of $10 million, which will then generate revenue for the city, which can be used to hire more teachers. The proposed project will be good for the Episcopal Diocese of Southern Virginia because it no longer be burdened by the expense of maintaining the manor house. Under our and Mr. Lindsey's plan, the long-term survivability of the manor house is assured. Also, our project protects the environment in the shoreline. We are working closely with the Elizabeth River Project to plan one of the most environmentally sensitive projects that has ever been done in the city of Norfolk. We have included features such as pervious sidewalks, stormwater filtering system, and the restoration of plus or minus 11,000 square feet of vegetated wetlands. And finally, I submit that our project is good for our friends at the Save Talbot Hall Organization. We are preserving the manor house for the future, and we are providing a view shed from the manor house to the water. In summary, our proposal is a rare win-win-win-win-win project for the neighborhood, the Civic League, the city of Norfolk, the Episcopal Diocese of Southern Virginia, and the environment and the shoreline, and for our friends at the Save Talbot Hall Foundation. I urge you to support the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Virginia Distanzaleo, pardon me, followed by Jennifer Sleeper.
Good evening. I'm Virginia Distanzaleo, and I reside at 1570 Brandon Avenue in Petersburg, Virginia. I'm representing the Diocese of Southern Virginia, which consists of 110 congregations and about 28,000 members. I'm joined this evening by our Bishop Holly Hollereth and our Vice Chancellor Timothy Kuhl. The Diocese of Southern Virginia supports the rezoning of the property currently owned by us that is under contract with the Talbot Hall West LLC. The letters that were sent to you on our behalf by our bishop and our chancellor completely state our position in this manner. Our diocese came into stewardship of the Talbot Hall property in the mid-1950s. We have attempted to care for this property to the best of our ability. However, for the past few years, the diocese has not been in a position to exercise adequate stewardship of the manor house. stewardship of the manor house. Specifically, the manor house has considerable deterioration and has suffered break-ins and vandalism in recent months. This rezoning provides a great deal of promise and certainty for the future of the manor house and its potential preservations. If the rezoning is not approved, the future of the manor house is highly uncertain. The decision to sell the property was not an easy one for the diocese, and it involved great discernment, including open public town hall meetings. After much discussion, acting through its annual council, approval was obtained to explore the possible sale of the property, determining that there were three requirements essential for the sale. First and foremost, consideration for the historic nature of the Talbot Hall manor house, preservation of the property's shoreline, and a use compatible with surrounding neighborhood. There was much interest in the property, some of which not have required zoning back to residential use, but we did not feel that it was in keeping with our resolution to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. For the general welfare of the neighborhood, the public necessity for change, and the need for good zoning practices, a rezoning is a necessity. The Save Talbot Hall Group, which opposes the rezoning, has been in touch with the diocese regarding their interest for nearly three years. We have engaged them. Their advocacy has influenced how we have approached the disposition of this very important asset, and we are open to have their submitting of a contract to acquire the property. Despite having every opportunity to do so, no concrete offer to purchase has ever materialized from the Save Talbot Hall Group. Fortunately for us, the Talbot Hall West LLC stepped forward with an adequate purchase price and a willingness to meet the requirements of our resolution. Both private parties have now entered into a contract for the sale of the property. So Talbot Hall West addressed all of our concerns. We feel that they will be the stewards of the property that is fitting for what is needed and in keeping with what we feel the Talbot Hall family wants. Talbot Hall West's principles are all individuals, as you know, with strong ties to this area. Your prompt decision is to affirm the Planning Commission's recommendation for rezoning, and that the diocese may relocate our offices and enter into lease negotiations. We ask for your urgency in coming to a decision, so that we may move forward and they can move forward with the preservation of the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Sleeper, followed by Elizabeth Smith, please.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Jennifer Garner Sleeper. My address is 254 La Valette Avenue, Norfolk 23504. I have been a property owner and resident of Norfolk for most of my adult life, about seventeen years, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of retaining the essence and integrity of Talbot Hall and the corresponding land. E Pluribus Unum. We've all heard it. Out of many, we are one. This is what saved Talbot Hall from being burned by the Union soldiers, and it's what needs to save it today as well. I believe there is a consensus among all parties to this proposed action, that Talbot Hall provides a unique look back to Norfolk and its history, especially in the relationship with the preservation of Talbot Hall during the Civil War. Thus, in any decision regarding the future of Talbot Hall, I believe it is absolutely necessary to retain Talbot Hall's property, solstice trees, and an unobstructed view to the Lafayette River shoreline. In that regard, I support the Talbot Hall Foundation's position as the end line for any compromise with Talbot Hall West LLC. One thing I've noticed tonight while everybody's been speaking is that the only proponents for this measure all live in Talbot Hall. And many of the people like myself that oppose it and would like to see Talbot Hall preserved live throughout the city. We need to keep this structure for the city. This property was a gift to the Diocese, and they were to be good stewards of it. Allowing the property to be destroyed for fourteen houses hardly seems to fit that description. Regardless of what the lady said before me, I do not see how that is good stewardship of the property. I do not understand why Norfolk has a hesitance to keep a natural shoreline with beautiful green space and historic significance undeveloped. During the past several years, the city of Norfolk has seen much of what is left or reclaimed of its shoreline lost to development. For instance, the promenade that just went up on Tidewater, River House Apartments on Granby, and Tanner's Landing, also on Granby near Riverview. All of these structures are built directly up to the water. I'm actually scared for River House Apartments that they're going to flood, so there is no available green space out of any of these new constructions. There's also no lack of existing waterfront, single-family homes available in Norfolk either. On the day that I wrote this, I pulled up seventy-five waterfront homes for sale. Norfolk has a history for demolishing historic structures, as the lady from the Norfolk Preservation Alliance said so nicely. I wasn't aware of some of those, and now I feel even worse about it. A good example is the destruction of three beautiful buildings downtown for the West End that did not materialize. We also can look back to the 1960s at this practice, when the Norfolk Historical Foundation saved another antebellum structure, the Willoughby Baylor House, that at that time was slated for destruction. And then we have the Moses Meyer House, which has completely lost its setting and therefore its significance in downtown, surrounded by and backing up to the MacArthur Mall. I believe the city of Norfolk should strive to retain its historical properties and surrounding grounds as a heritage to be passed on to succeeding generations. Based on Virginia code and Norfolk code, you are tasked to protect and preserve the natural, aesthetic, cultural, economic, and historic resources of the city. If the requested zoning action of the LLC is approved, the historic nature of Talbot Hall will be seriously degraded by the loss of property associated with Talbot Hall. I fervently ask the City Council to deny the requested zoning change outright, returning the matter to the proponents to work out a suitable disposition.
Thank you.
I really ask for you just to table it, so that maybe they can figure something out.
Elizabeth Smith, followed by David White.
Good evening. Excuse me. I'm Elizabeth Smith. I live at 324 Court Street in Portsmouth, Virginia. Jim and I've had three houses in Old Town. One was built in 1890, one was built in 1860, and our current house was built in 1830. We are well aware of the expense and the commitment it takes to sustain a historic house. Andrew McClellan talked about that at the Planning Commission. We feel that this arrangement, this group of owners and the partnership we have with Harvey Lindsey, will help us take care of that house, will help us restore that house to the condition it deserves. We understand the concerns about the view shed. We also think that the setting, as you see in your plan, of the two homes in front of that will allow protection of that view shed. I don't wish to take your time. There are a lot of people behind me to speak. I thank you for your attention to this, and I thank the diocese for their protection of the house. Thank you.
Thank you. David White, followed by Justin Sarafin.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. My name is David White, and my home is at 508 Carlisle Way. Norfolk has been my home for all of my forty-nine years, and it has been my wife's home for all of her years, but I will not say how many. For the last fifteen years, we have owned our house on Carlisle Way, raising our three young daughters within 100 yards of Talbot Hall. We have enjoyed the property, and were disappointed when the Episcopal Diocese decided to sell it. However, more concerning to us than losing our enjoyment of the property is what might be built there and the impacts to the neighborhood and my family. My first priority is the well-being of my wife and three daughters. Some of the proposed projects, consistent with the current institutional zoning of the property, when we heard about them, had my wife and I starting to think about which realtor to list our home with, and thinking of where we might like to live. And we were not limiting ourselves to the city. We would want to get ahead of the curve of those moving out of the neighborhood. We were relieved and pleased to put that process on hold when we learned the church had received an offer from a group of fourteen established local families to build their homes on the property. I am here tonight to ask the council to change the zoning of the property to residential, allowing for a low-density extension of the neighborhood as proposed by Talbot Hall West LLC. Further, I strongly discourage the council from any actions or stipulations upon the residential zoning change that would jeopardize the private business agreement between Talbot Hall West and the Episcopal Diocese. The project proposed by Talbot Hall West is certainly the most compatible use to keep Talbot Park a desirable neighborhood for families. Norfolk needs more such neighborhoods, not fewer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Justin Sarafin, followed by Michael Hawley.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. My name's Justin Sarafin. I live at 1001 Page Street in Charlottesville, Virginia. I'm an architectural historian by training and currently sit on Charlottesville's Board of Architectural Review. I work as statewide Director of Preservation Initiatives and Engagement for Preservation Virginia, which celebrates its 125th anniversary this year and whose founding has ties to Norfolk. Preservation Virginia, a private nonprofit organization and statewide historic preservation leader, is dedicated to perpetuating and revitalizing Virginia's cultural, architectural, and historic heritage, thereby ensuring that historic places are integral parts of the lives of present and future generations of Virginians, and I would argue Americans. From the ongoing archaeological program at Historic Jamestown to our annual Most Endangered Historic Sites program, the mission of Preservation Virginia is to preserve, promote, and serve as an advocate for the state's irreplaceable historic places for the cultural, economic, and educational benefits of everyone. In 2012, Preservation Virginia included Talbot Hall on its Most Endangered Historic Sites list, citing as a threat the unknown future of the site as a result of the Diocese of Virginia's decision to sell it. At that time, it was noted that, quote, "The view shed of the site located on the Lafayette River remains in much the same condition as it did in the 18th century," a characterization that aligns with assessments by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and other local and regional groups. With the benefit of statewide experience with historic resources and 18th-century sites like Talbot Hall, it is clear to Preservation Virginia that what remains of the plantation's historic landscape setting is an absolutely necessary component of its historical integrity and thus eligibility for the National Register of Historic Places and thus the potential for use of historic preservation tax credits. Talbot Hall's orientation and connection to the Lafayette River is a key component of its historical significance, which would be negated by a plan to surround it with new houses. And I'm really speaking specifically about houses between it and the river. As the last remaining antebellum plantation house in Norfolk with its setting intact, divorcing the primary facade of the main house from its historic link to the river would undermine its viability and public perception as a significant historic site. The potential alteration of one of Norfolk's remaining resources, the type of historic resource that the general plan for the city of Norfolk and its zoning ordinances recognize as significant to the promotion and well-being of Norfolk and its citizens, should be thoughtfully considered. Nearly all successful historic preservation projects require the collaboration of private and public entities alike. Mutually agreeable solutions that achieve new development while still maintaining historic integrity are possible. Talbot Hall served as the centerpiece for the development of the Talbot Park neighborhood itself and should remain a register-eligible resource, anchoring a new potential phase of development in Talbot Park. Preservation Virginia continues to urge interested parties to reach a reasonable solution that will allow development in a smart and sensitive way while maintaining this important sense of place in Norfolk. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Michael Hawley, followed by James Patrick O'Brien.
My name is Michael Hawley. I reside at 1514 Norway Court, Norfolk, Virginia. Along with my wife Wendy and I, we are members of the LLC. There are a couple of points that I would like to make. You've heard everybody's reason for and against probably more than you really want to. Couple of things that I'd like to point out. Number one, the use of the word developer. We are truly developing a piece of property, but we're not developing it for profit. We're truly developing it for our own private use. Compromise. We truly have worked together. Can you imagine having fourteen people sitting around a board table, trying to come together to figure out what we're going to do with this historical piece of property? I have to say that Billy DeShiel and Mr. Lindsey worked hard to make sure that that piece of property was preserved, and I believe that their plan does exactly what the diocese wants and to establish and to keep that piece of property there. Mrs. Talbot's lot. It's confusing to me that there's two separate articles. One in the paper on Sunday, which said that Mrs. Talbot was going to give us the piece of property. One said that we had to purchase the piece of property. Totally confusing from the foundation's side. Most of us that are going to be in the LLC who want the rezoning are people of the land. Myself, I'm in the seafood industry. There's been talk about the trees, whether they're going to come down. Obviously, some will, but I can tell you, many of us have walked the piece of property with our architects, with our builders, to discuss, how many can we save? What can we do to preserve the land? And what can we do to preserve that piece of property, so it's still a beautiful piece of property when these houses are built? My wife and I ask you to please support the LLC. Thank you.
Thank you. James O'Brien.
James P. O'Brien, 520 Talbot Hall Road, Norfolk 23505. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, and staff. I oppose the LLC's application as presently constituted, because it threatens the survival of Talbot Hall. If Talbot Hall is to become anything other than an old house in the suburbs, its connection to the river must be maintained to keep its historical authenticity. I've lived across the street from Talbot Hall since 1975, and I'm not a red herring. One tenth of that time, now four and a half years, I've worked to preserve Talbot Hall and its significance for the people of Norfolk. It's a personal tragedy that after all those efforts, and after Mr. Lindsey's beneficent interventions, we find ourselves a few hundred feet away from doing just that. Of all the ecological and historical virtues of Talbot Hall, one touches my family more deeply than any other, and that is the lessons it could teach about race relations in our city and our nation. Often, we honor white history and black history as if they are forever separate, but they were united at Talbot Hall. For centuries, whites and blacks built their lives here separately, but their relationships were inherently interdependent. The old wars and warehouses, foundries and shipyards that could clarify those interdependent but separate journeys are long gone. So too, most of the churches and houses. But not yet Talbot Hall. Its history for much of two centuries was also two histories, planners and global traders, and slaves and freedmen. Through the Civil War, then through Reconstruction and Jim Crow and segregation up to massive resistance, we have these two histories, separate but inextricably intertwined. Talbot Hall became one of the few places where blacks and whites could come together, worship together, listen to each other, pour out their souls to one another, and work together to set a new course for all of our people, black and white. Talbot Hall is where the Women's Council on Interracial Relations and the Norfolk Council on Human Relations can meet, deliberate, and take action. Talbot Hall is where two histories became one, a new history for all of us. A notable endeavor, certainly, and for its time and place, a revolution in civil liberties that asserted bravery over cowardice, hope for a future together in reconciliation of the past, a vision for a shared future with common purpose. We all need the lessons of Talbot Hall for ourselves and those who will follow in our footsteps. This is why we need to preserve its historical integrity as a river plantation and a spiritual retreat. It is the one place left in Norfolk where blacks and whites, against formidable odds, pledged and acted to build Norfolk's future together and honor our common history once and for all. It is a tragedy of the human spirit that we find ourselves only a few hundred feet from preserving the legacy of Talbot Hall for the common good. Thank you.
Gene Rutherford, followed by Sarah Smith.
I have something of my heart I want to share. I have no prepared speech, but I want to share.
You live at 14.
I'm sorry. I do live at 1438 Meads Road, off Little Creek Road. Talbot Hall is more than a historic site. It's a holy place. I speak as one who worked at Talbot Hall for sixteen years and have seen people's lives enriched, seen children grow and learn, and seen just an enormous amount of spiritual growth in people who had the benefit of that place to come to. And I think it's worthy of consideration that it is consecrated land, in the true spirit of people who are serious about their faith and people who are trying to build better cities and better communities based on the faith that they've gained there. I thank you for listening.
Sarah Smith. Sarah Smith.
All right.
Christopher O'Brien, thank you, followed by Joanne Berkeley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Christopher O'Brien. I reside at 521 Bosvane Avenue, apartment 25C in Norfolk. I was born here. I grew up here and went to school here, and eventually I left here, like a lot of my friends. A lot of them live now in places like Washington, New York City, Los Angeles, or even Richmond, or Raleigh, or Seattle. A lot of them have chosen to make their lives in these places instead of returning to Norfolk. Why haven't they chosen to come home? Well, some of them do their work in the only, they only do work that they can do in those places. But the reality is, for many just embarking on their careers, work is increasingly portable. We can have the job we want and the place we want. For people like me, what we do is no longer tethered to where we are, have computer, will travel. Norfolk's pressing question is, how do we attract young professionals, the kind we need to sustain not just growth but vibrant growth? How are we going to bring here the kind of people who are going to want to stay, build a life here, become homeowners and taxpayers, and raise their kids here? When we show them what was once open space and living shoreline and history, things that Norfolk has, a place like Charlotte doesn't, and say, "We made sure to cram the houses as close together as we could," what is their response going to be? Looking at the emerging cities in America, they aren't suburbs or ones that have sacrificed open space for development. Think Portland, think Austin, think Richmond. Those cities are succeeding. Those cities embrace their authenticity and their uniqueness. I didn't come back to Norfolk because I was looking for the familiar. I came back to Norfolk because I believe it is part of the new frontier, a place of reinvention and renewal. When I talk with friends my age about the kind of place we want to live, we often come back to how they should be places with authenticity, cities that are unique and provoke us to explore them. Those explorations can and should bring our city's people to places like Talbot Hall. But if the proposed development is allowed, Talbot Hall's integrity as a historical and environmental treasure will be inescapably destroyed. On the other hand, if you act today to preserve Talbot Hall, Norfolk will have something that is both unique and authentic. A vision like this will bring in Norfolk's next great era. You have a chance today to take a step in that direction. A residential subdivision is not unique. An antebellum plantation with a pristine setting right in the middle of a city? That's unique. That's authentic. You want a city with a vibrant and growing creative class? Show them you understand the value of your history, that you recognize authenticity when you see it, and they will help you build our future. Thank you.
Joanne Berkeley. Followed by Tim Trent.
Thank you, Joanne Berkeley, 1419 Buckingham Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. I attended an earlier council meeting a couple of weeks ago and heard the concern of several members of the council about the zoning issues and property rights. I understand their concerns. However, the Talbot Hall project is different, and it's more important than a normal zoning issue. The larger question is how the zoning affects all of Norfolk's citizens. I would like to tell a story about the Talbot family in Norfolk. I would compare them to Henry Clay Hafner, to Josh and Colgate Darden, to Harvey Lindsay, Otamakin, and Joan Bra, as their contributions to the city were so great. I'd like to list some of these. The Monroe Building downtown, the Sewell's Point Golf Course, the building committee of Christ and St. Luke's when it moved to its present site, the organization of the Museums of Art and Science, now the Chrysler Museum. They built and paid for the first paved street in Norfolk. They gave land for Granby High School. They planted the large live oak trees at either side of Granby Street Bridge. They planted the crepe myrtles and camellias in City Park along with Fred Hewitt. They served on the board of the Norfolk Public Library and helped establish and build the library on Freemason Street. The last gift of the family was the gift of their beloved home to the Diocese of Southern This was a great contribution. I'd like to read a statement from the newspaper of that time, talking about historic preservation in Norfolk propitius. It said, "My house is safe in the hands of dedicated trustees. The saints will preserve Talbot Hall. Anxiety must continue as to the future of many other old homes that Norfolk possesses as an early American city with distinguished architectural ancestry." I would ask that you, the city council of Norfolk, the members of the LLC, the members of the Talbot Hall Foundation, and all citizens be the saints that protect this property. There's an easy way that I think you could do it, if we could please work together. If everyone could come together and try to look for the greater good, I don't think there's very much that anyone has to give up, and it would bring peace to our area and take away any hard feelings that might result from these decisions. So I ask that we please not vote tonight, or at least vote that there can be a coming together of us and to modify the zoning permit as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim Trent.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Tim Trent. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Kaufman at Canoles, 150 West Main Street here in the city of Norfolk. It is my privilege to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant and the 14 families that are proposing this rezoning. Start by applauding your strategy and trying to shorten the meeting by turning the air conditioner off. I will make my remarks very brief in accordance. Couple of points to make of legal import. The opposition in past meetings and in correspondence has raised certain questions about the compliance of our application with the requirements of the city's zoning ordinance. We have carefully examined the issues that they have raised and formally submitted our response on those positions to the city attorney's office. I want to tip to repeat that here, sufficient to say that we strongly believe that the application is full compliance with the city's ordinances. We have also submitted to the city a memo from Paige Pollard with Commonwealth Preservation Group, a well-regarded local historic preservation expert, which affirms the applicant's position that the manor house structure and lot, as they are proposed by our plan, do in fact retain material historic preservation potential and have the potential to be eligible for historic registry designation. Finally, we have heard from the diocese this evening that the manor house is in a state of disrepair, has suffered break-ins and vandalism, and that its future, if the rezoning is not approved, is highly uncertain. It is important context for your decision tonight that there are presently no public protections in place for the preservation of the manor house. In fact, I know of nothing that prevents, heaven forbid, the issuance of a demolition permit for the structure. In stark contrast, Section 27-39.8 of the PDR ordinance that you're being asked to act on tonight specifically requires the preservation of the manor house. Accordingly, I would respectfully submit that pursuant to Section 40 of the city charter, the city is at risk of imminent loss, and the public health of the city is in imminent danger in the form of loss of this historic resource if this rezoning is not approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. All right. That concludes the list that I have of people who signed up who indicated their willingness to speak tonight. I have about 60 names of people who, you know, for a good reason, I guess, decided not to speak, but who wanted to register themselves as either a proponent or an opponent. I'm going to read the names. If any of one of you, when I read your name, want to speak, just raise your hand, but I think we've concluded the list here. So Roberta and Jerry Mullins are proponents. Charlene Floyd, excuse me if I mispronounce the name or I can't read your, the writing as well. So Charlene Floyd is an opponent. Joyce Williams is an opponent. Robin Putnam is a proponent. John Benedict is a proponent. Joanne Benedict, a proponent. David Twardzik, a proponent. Steve Cyrus, a proponent. Stephen Hall, a proponent. Annie Gao, a proponent. Taz Taylor, a proponent. Catherine Taylor, a proponent. Madeline Sawyer, a proponent. John Sawyer, a proponent. Joseph Antley, a proponent. Jill Lane, a proponent. Victor Lane, a proponent. Sarah Kruger, a proponent. Lynette Clevin, pardon me, a proponent. Elizabeth DeShiel, a proponent. Catherine Simpson, a proponent. Judy DeShiel, a proponent. Judith Blackman, a proponent. Paige Simpson, a proponent. Gracie DeShiel, a proponent. John Simpson, a proponent. Kristen Simpson, a proponent. Howard Simpson, a proponent. Wendy Hallet-Hawley, a proponent. Janey Richards, a proponent. David Richards, a proponent. Catherine DeShiel's a proponent. Susan Brown, a proponent. Catherine Mecklemore, a proponent. John Mecklemore, a proponent. Lillian Mecklemore, a proponent. Chris Cantor, a proponent. Amanda Stephens, a proponent. Tazwell, or Judith Tazwell, I think, a proponent. Charles Robinson, a proponent. Robert Tupper, a proponent. Shirley Robinson, a proponent. James Markey, a proponent. Catherine Markey, a proponent. Elizabeth Hawley, a proponent. Patrick Baker, a proponent. Jill Baker, a proponent. Steve Pallan-Palain, a proponent. Lisa Carroll, a proponent. Jim and Carol Forster, a proponent. Joseph Sleeper, an opponent. Lauren Connor, a proponent. Kim Georges, a proponent. Blair Simpson, a proponent. Fred Simpson, Frederick Simpson, a proponent. Greg Brown, a proponent. Sherry Priggin, a proponent. Nick Georges, a proponent. And Karen Crawford is a proponent. I think I've read everybody's name. I've given everybody now an opportunity who wanted to speak to be heard, and so that concludes the list of folks who were here to speak at the public hearing. And so unless there is some, something else from any member of the council, I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
I have something.
Would you like to do it now?
With regard to what was said tonight, and I appreciate having heard from both sides, and I think that both sides spoke eloquently, but I think what we have in front of us is that we have a contract. The issue of interference comes into play, council, when we're asked not to vote for something. I understand your First Amendment issue, but what bothers me the most is that we're asked not to approve this zoning, which defeats the contract, because your client wants to come in with their own contract. That's where I have a problem. Add on top of that that your contract, or at least your client, has not escrowed funds, has not placed funds with a bank, has not produced a contract, as we heard from the diocese. The diocese wants to sell this, and it may have been for sale only a year, but I remember when I first came on council, and I ended up going out to a meeting, and I'm going, oh my God, I got elected, and I got to put up with this. Oh, what am I going to do? So it was quite an enlightening experience, even when I went out. It was about four years ago that there was, meetings began about the sale of the property. I guess with regard to the issue that was raised about Williamsburg, I think that Ms. Taylor mentioned that. Well, it appears that in this particular case, Harvey Lindsay, you're here, you must be our Rockefeller, because you're sticking your neck out, you're doing what you've said you'd do, and that should be, in this case, greatly appreciated. I have a hard time denying a zoning in a sense where, in the neighborhood, I've gotten some emails where people have said, "If you agree to vote for this, I will never vote for you again." You know, well, I understand. That's fine. Hopefully, there, of the thousands of votes that we do, it may be the case. I understand that. But I also understand the fact that we have to look at what we have before us. And I do worry that if we did deny the zoning, the funds are not set aside. There is no second contract there. The diocese is in need of the sale, and frankly, who knows what the rates will do to the LLC with regard to banks if they don't move as quickly as they need to. So I see where they're coming from. The other issue I have with the foundation is, I've heard from numerous people today, but I've heard various offers. It should be, we should preserve it to make it a park. There is a better use out there. Preserve the home. Preserve the home plus the view. Well, frankly, the home plus the view with this scenario, those houses, and I've seen the proposal, I liked what Mr. Taylor had shown me, but then I had to think about, well, if we allowed a view all the way to the river, if I'm living next, a public access to the river, the problem I have is if I'm living next to that, and I've got people coming down every evening to sit on the water right next to my home, it becomes a public park. And that's, it's not fair to any individual to be in that position, especially one that's not maintained by the city and maintained by, who knows, if it's the foundation or anyone I can, it's very difficult to tell somebody in an LLC, you have to go talk to the foundation and come up with an agreement, or we're not going to approve the zoning. It's different when we deal with a neighborhood that comes to us and says, as recently, a neighborhood came to us and said, "We don't want this zoning because it's too dense, and it's going to bring traffic through our neighborhood, and we just can't handle that." That's different, and I can see that in a different sense than what's being proposed today. If the LLC wanted you to be partners, they would have made you partners in a private matter in a private way. They would have done that, and they could have done that. They elected not to. So I have a very difficult time voting a zoning down, forcing them to a table to discuss this with another party, when they also have considered and brought it upon themselves to seek Mr. Lindsay out, and he's stepping up as he is. Where will be a year from now, two years from now? We can take that and see where we go and do the, perhaps do the preservations that have been mentioned, to a certain extent, to the home itself. But right now, I can tell you that though it is a difficult matter and the various problems I have, and the only reason I say that is I think that I have a duty to tell you where my problems result. You may disagree with me, that's fine. You can intellectually disagree, but I think I have a duty to tell you where my thoughts are and the problems I may have, why I would vote for, and in particular, vote for the zoning change of this case. So, thank you.
Let's say one thing.
Yes, sir.
I know Terry's, but anyway, I've had the privilege of serving on this council for almost 14 years to the day. We started a task force in Ward's Corner the fall of 2000, and Jim McDonough was there and Jim English, and we had 14 civic leagues that came together to look after the neighborhoods, the business district, deal with issues of crime, density. Talbot Park, at least once a year, in, back in 2000, we started, back then Conley Phillips came, and then we had Don Williams, and now Dr. Wibley and Andy have joined us. It is still ongoing. And we dealt with all the issues, and at least once a year, what's going to happen to Talbot Hall? And we've got a density problem, it's an I and one, and anything, something can happen there that we don't like. Even when we, it became publicly for sale, I went up to Mr. Lindsay's office and talked to Al Carmichael and some of the folks, and they showed, well, this is, "Make this work. These are some of the things that we've got to do," and, or may work, or we think can work, and they were all residential around the manor house. And I went to work, I know that area, I went to work, my business was there for, I went to work there for 26 years, from 1970 to 1996. My parents were close friends with the Talbots. Fred Hewitt worked for my company for a while before I was there. He's a little older. I know the sensitivity. I understand the neighborhood, and that's why it's so special, and frankly, and I met with the preservationists, and I'm all on board for what they do. They're good friends, and I got a few of those threatening emails also, but that kind of goes with the job. But when this group called, and there are a number of my friends of mine, some I don't know, and they brought this in, and they said, "We're going to do this, 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 and we're going to save this manor house, and Harvey Lindsay's going to renovate it, and we're going to take care of it, and we're going to have low density." I thought, wow, this is, this is it. We've hit a home run here. I was frankly taken aback when the preservation people came up and said, "No, this isn't going to work. We got to slide these lots over, and we have to move this, but people are going to put up a lot of money." And I don't know what that money is. I know it was for sale for over $4 million. But I don't, this is as close to a win-win situation we'll ever get on that piece of property. The church has told you, they've cut the lights off, it's falling down around their ears, they can't take care of it. ears, they can't take care of it. If we postpone a vote, or don't let these guys move ahead, and ladies, we're subject to interest rate sensitivity, we're subject to further deterioration of the house, I don't see, I think this is a win-win for our city, we need to move ahead, and we need to move ahead now. And I personally thank them, they're not coming to make a profit, they're coming to live here and be a part of a special neighborhood and take, and take care of a special piece of property. So I believe strongly we need to move ahead in a positive manner.
Dr. Whibley?
Well, first, I would like to say that this is one of the best examples about what is right in Norfolk, and that is people that come out on a night when they should be watching Virginia playing baseball to speak about something they feel passionately about. And I disagree with Andy saying that we should not be involved in a private matter. This is actually the charge that is given to council. Our charge is to approve or disapprove zoning, and we are charged with determining whether that zoning change is appropriate and consistent with neighborhoods and the general plan of Norfolk. So I think this is a perfect example of what we do and why we stay here to listen to these comments. I do have, I was going to say this when I voted, but I'll go ahead and talk about this now. And some of my comments may not be exactly right because I had submitted three questions to the LLC and did not receive answers for those, so that if my remarks aren't consistent with that, I'm sorry, but I tried to get the answers and I was not given those. I want you to know that my vote tonight should never be construed as anything less than full support of the lovely families that will build on this property. They're true Norfolkians who will build quality homes that will be an asset to this neighborhood. I delivered many of the kids that are going to live in these bedrooms, they're a little older now, but I know these families, and I know they're going to take good care of this property. I also think that frankly, you probably are going to have some of the best barbecues or happy hours every night when all these families get together. I also don't want you to think that my vote tonight means that I am totally in support of the efforts of the foundation. I am disappointed that they've been inconsistent, their requests have not always been substantiated, it's been confusing, and frankly, I would have hoped for more collaboration and compromise in working with this LLC. My frustration tonight, and that's what my vote will reflect, is that we had a chance here as a city to get ahead of this. We shouldn't be here tonight. We shouldn't have to go through this dilemma. This city knew this was going to be an important issue. They could have gotten ahead of it from the starting block and made sure that anybody that wanted to propose a development knew that we wanted to be consistent with the general plan, that we respected and honored historical significance in this city. And these groups could have worked together to build the best possible development this city could have had. Look at all these creative people. You could have all worked together with the city guidance to come up with something that preserved the house and the view, developed 14 fabulous lots that families could live in, and everybody would have been on top of the game. It's so disappointing to me that we have come to this because we're talking about such small, little issues to get to this. Cities that matter, cities like Charleston and Savannah and Alexandria, they get it. It's more than just a tax space. If you're only looking to the future and forgetting about our history, you will never become a city of significance. This is my hope for this city, a city that would recognize we need to preserve our riverfront. We have an Elizabeth City project, or Elizabeth River project that is working hard to preserve the Lafayette River. I would hope this group would have said they will go ahead with the proposal of their grant, whether or not they are given the money, the grant or not. I would hope that we would have been able to do this to make a difference and set an example for what we would like the developments of our city to embody. That's our chance, and I'm disappointed we're not going to take that advantage.
Call the roll. Okay.
I have three ordinances for this item, Mr. President. The first is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, so as to change the land use designation for property located at 600 Talbot Hall Road from institutional to single-family suburban. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Unlike Andy, I don't have to worry about a vote, election. This is my last meeting, and I have gotten, heard from both sides, too, and some of them saying, well, what is your legacy is going to be, or whatever. And I've served on the school board where we had similar issues. And being able to vote for a plan that preserves the plantation manor house that was built with the help of slaves and has a historic human relationship, history, will be preserved, that house will be preserved with a good view of the water from the front porch, along with a low-density, tax-paying housing, 14 houses, and I vote aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
You know, I am a member of Grace Episcopal Church, and ever since this property went on the market, I know at least six or seven Sundays I've gone over just to look at that piece of property. It's a very, very beautiful, pristine piece of property. And I really wish that the preservationists, those persons interested in preserving this property, had the money to buy it, and then that would just solve that issue. I had a similar vote years ago when it came to Covenant Presbyterian Church on Corporate Avenue that needed to expand, and they wanted to purchase the property of Mr. Tom Young, former publisher of The Journal and Guide, and the son of PB Young, the founder of The Journal and Guide. And I lost, I lost a lot of friends on that vote because I voted with the church to take this piece of property and make it institutional. I guess one of my biggest concerns with this is that this property, when the homes, if the homes are built, that they won't be cookie-cutter homes, like you ride down the expressway and you look over and all of the homes have the same structure, the same, they look exactly the same, or when they might be on the other side of the house was the same. I live in a home that my grandfather built in 1918, and it has, in my opinion, a great architectural integrity. Norfolk has a poor, poor, poor history of preserving buildings like that. There was a period, construction called a Federalist Period, that Norfolk just tore buildings down. The Town Bank Building downtown there, which used to be the wheat first security building, somewhere around 1984 Norfolk was on the verge of tearing that building down. And you can imagine what a travesty it would have been if they had torn that building down because it's a beautiful, beautiful structure. With that said, I, I'm going to vote in favor of the project, but I really do wish that the preservationists had had money enough to buy that property and to preserve it and keep the pristine existence that it has here today. I vote aye.
Dr. Whibley?
No.
Ms. Williams?
I had the opportunity to meet with the Talbot Hall Foundation, and I listened to their presentation, and it made a lot of sense to me in listening to what they were asking for and seemingly a small compromise in a bigger picture. And then two weeks ago, when we were, was it two weeks ago, last week? Time goes by, it's all a blur. But when Andy brought me back to Real Estate Law 101 and who's who in the contract, and it may seem like it's very cut and dry, or it's not taking into account the emotion or the history, but there's who's who in the contract. And for those of us in real estate, Kim is here, she's a broker, who's who in the contract? The buyer, the seller, the parties, what can and cannot be disclosed, what can and cannot be changed? For us in real estate, that's important because when you start tweaking with who's who in the contract, as a Realtor, you can lose your license. And so when you said that, it made it crystal clear for me, and it really took out a lot of the ambiguity in the whole issue in who's who in the contract. And the fact that the property has been for sale for a while, there have been opportunities for others to make an offer, make a legitimate offer, and for the diocese to accept that offer. I think, quite honestly, it's just sad that it would come to a point that a church would have to sell such a historic piece of property because they just can't afford to continue to take it, to take care of it. And that may speak to the times that we're in and donations and people not tithing and all that good stuff. But who's who in the contract? And what's before us is between the diocese and the LLC. And I believe that that's what I'm obligated to vote on, and that's what I'm going to vote on tonight. I will say that I also appreciate everyone who came down tonight, all the neighbors and the friends. I hope that everyone, when they leave, will be able to put this behind them in a matter of speaking and still continue to be neighbors and friends and not let this issue divide you and cause a permanent rift in any long-term friendships and familiar relationships that may have developed over the years. Because clearly, all of you care about the city of Norfolk, and all of you have the same kind of lifelong ties to the city of Norfolk that I have. And with that, I vote aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Before I vote, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This has really been a very civil, a public hearing. Some of them are, you know, were contentious at times, but thank you for the polite way that you've addressed the council and each other. I just have to say, I mean, I believe Norfolk is a city of significance. I love living here. I would rather live here than Savannah, or Charleston, or Raleigh, and it's because of people like you that I, that I love it. We have a great community here, and so again, thanks for coming down. I vote aye.
Second is an ordinance to amend Chapter 27 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk 1992, so as to create the Talbot Hall Residential Plan Development District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The final is an ordinance to rezone property located at 600 Talbot Hall Road from I-N-1 Institutional to PDR Talbot Hall. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
It's all ahead, Mr. President.
Okay, again, thank you all for, thank you for coming down. That concludes the formal portion of tonight's agenda.